Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Planning and Transportation Commission. Today is Wednesday, April 2nd, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. On our agenda tonight, there are no teleconference requests under AB 2449, so we can go forward with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for all being here tonight on a special evening. I hand it to Andrea for the roll call.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Anand?
Here.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Present.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Present.
And Chair Clemens?
Present. Thank you. Before we get into tonight's study session, we're going to Agenda Item Number Five, a public comment segment. Public comment is limited to items that are not on tonight's agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, which is California Government Code Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or to have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. I'd like to ask if anyone at this time in the council chambers has, would like to make a comment for public comment?
Yes.
Oh, yes, please. Richard Crone, please come on up. Thank you for the speaker slip. Yes, and welcome.
I'm Richard Crone, a founder of Save San Carlos Parks, working to preserve nature in our city. I live at 148 Glasgow by the Highlands Park. I am sad to say I failed our city by not helping you enforce our protected tree ordinance. On March 29th, we allowed three healthy, structurally sound, 50-year-old redwoods to be cut and chipped at 172 Glasgow. An autopsy before you affirms their structural strength and vitality. My neighbor emailed me during the appeal period stating, quote, "That the trees are in good condition is exactly the problem," and the city acknowledged as much in issuing the permit. The arborists rated them moderate risk, but ISA best practices recommend monitoring, not removal, because redwoods have the lowest failure rate of all the trees protected by the city. Before I was approved to even submit an appeal, Rucha Dande wrote my neighbor in an email stating, "We recommend discussing this matter with your neighbor to resolve it amicably without resorting to the appeal process. However, please note that this is a private matter, and you should address it directly with your neighbor without involving the city in any correspondence." In the email that you were copied on, my neighbor threatened me and the city with a lawsuit. Is it fair for the city to ask a neighbor to enforce the ordinance when staff won't deny a flawed permit? I didn't conclude the appeal because the city left me one choice: protect the trees or preserve my friendships. Thirty years of friendships. This is a dangerous precedent for the remaining 60 redwoods in the Highlands area. In closing, three requests. Audit the permit for 172 in detail to determine if there are systemic errors in heritage tree protection procedures in the city. Number two, publish the heritage tree removal history since the ordinance 2022 inception. And three, if you do, our firm, Crone Consulting LLC, a licensed San Carlos business, will prepare a pro bono objective analysis for your review. I reserve the remainder of my time for your questions and feedback.
Thank you, Richard. We are limited to two minutes, and discussion of this would not be allowed because it's not on the agenda, but we really thank you for your comments. And I call up Heidi Liebengoth. Heidi, please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Heidi Liebengoth, and I live on Glasgow Lane as well. Let's discuss three policy failures exposed by the Glasgow Lane Heritage Tree Removal. First, enforcement. Neighbors are asked to police each other. That's not fair. It's the job of the city to enforce its laws, not to pit neighbors against one another. Second, incentives. It costs $300 for a permit to remove a heritage tree.
I'm sorry, Heidi, can you pause just a sec? Andrea, can we get the timer working? Yes, thank you. Got it. Please, go ahead.
Incentives. It costs $300 to get the permit to remove a heritage tree regardless of age or size, but it's nearly $3,000, 10 times more, to peel that removal. The burden and friction are on the person trying to protect the tree, not the person cutting it down. Third, transparency. The city's website says a list of protected tree removal permits is updated weekly, but that link is gone. There's no access to permit history or current activity. Please, restore that link, publish the data, and include permit notices in the e-notify system and next door so residents can be informed. This isn't just about one house. 172, 144 Glasgow, and others have all removed multiple healthy redwood trees. We don't know how many in total or whether permits were issued. We can't know because the data isn't public. This is a terrible precedent for the remaining redwoods, not just in Highlands Park area, but beyond. This ecosystem provides habitat for species of concern, air purification, and so much more. Every removal degrades the quality of life for all of us. Our ask: review the fee structure and the process. Preserving protected heritage trees should not be 10 times harder than cutting them down. Require a second opinion where heritage tree risk is assessed as moderate, but the owner insists removal is the only option. Provide transparency. Restore the link to the current protected heritage tree removal permits posted in the city's e-notify and next door threads. And replace the heritage trees that have already been removed in our public parks. Our general plan includes the goal to maintain and expand the urban canopy with special emphasis on protection of heritage trees. Let's be sincere and forthright in our pursuit of these goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Great. Are there any other people present that would like to make a public comment? No? And Lynette, at this time, are there any hands raised on Zoom to make a public comment?
Yes, there is one hand raised. Sam.
Sam. Great. Welcome, Sam. Thank you for attending. Please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Sam Hersberg, and I am the co-president of the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood. I'm also a planner with the County of San Mateo, where I've worked for the last 34 years, and I have been involved in the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood for over 25 years. I'm very concerned about the land uses around our neighborhood, which are being proposed for redevelopment, including, at this time, you know, you have the Eastside Innovation District and the Northeast Plan, and all of these areas, according to the Regional Water Quality Control Board Geo Tracker, have a variety of contaminated sites with toxics in the surface, groundwater, and leaching into the San Francisco Bay.
Sam, excuse me just for a second. I just want to make sure your comments steer clear of the topic for the study session this evening. Please go ahead.
Well, it has to do with toxics, and it has to do with redevelopment, including in the Northeast Area Plan.
Okay, anything regarding the Northeast Area Plan, please come back to that item, and you're happy to make a comment.
I will. Yes, I will. I'm talking about land use changes, and what I'd like to request, based on the review of 789 Old County Road and the Alexandria Development at Kellymore Raytheon Site, is that the city established some clear policies regarding the cleanup and not capping those sites because of the leaching of the pollutants into the groundwater in the San Francisco Bay, and that EIRs be required for these contaminated sites and not mitigated negdecks. I think there's some clear policy language that needs to be developed by the city, and we've also had dialogue with the city council members about this, and they've asked us to direct some of these comments to the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sam. I appreciate it. Lynette, are there any other hands at this time on Zoom?
There are none.
Okay. We're going to give folks on Zoom another 30 seconds or so. If they'd like to make a public comment this evening, feel free to virtually raise your hand by clicking on Reactions and then the Raise Hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you are on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand virtually, and then if you're called upon, star six at that time to unmute. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to make a public comment?
There are none.
Okay, thanks. Before we close the public comment, I just wanted to see if staff had wanted to make any clarifying comments about the tree removal policy. Thanks.
Sure. So we'll definitely take these comments into consideration and look into the history. I did want to say, and we can make sure it's more clear, there's actually an interactive way to look up the permits online by map or address, and so we can make sure to clearly show that, not only for tree permits, but for additions, new homes, things like that. So if it's okay, I can use your contact info and follow-up with you directly on that, but we'll definitely take a look and see what we can find. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. I appreciate your being so responsive. Great. At this time, then I need a motion to close the general public comment period this evening.
I move that we close the public comment period.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clemens?
Yes, thank you. Great. Thank you. All right, we're on to Agenda Item Six on tonight's meeting, which is approval of the minutes from the March 17th Planning and Transportation Commission meeting. I wanted to ask my colleagues, are there any corrections or comments you'd like to make on the meeting minutes? Okay, if not, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I move that we approve the March 17, 2025 Planning and Transportation Commission meeting minutes.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clemens?
Yes. Thank you. Great. So we are on to Item Seven on the agenda tonight, which is our main item. It is a study session on the Northeast Area Specific Plan on the public draft, and just wanted to clarify, we're going to have a staff presentation. There'll be opportunity for the public to make comments, and then for the commissioners to ask questions and make comments, and just wanted staff to be, you know, clear about what you would find helpful from the commission in terms of feedback. Thank you. Please go ahead.
How do we ask questions?
I'm sorry. Yes, so just clarifying, there'll be a time after staff presentation, yes, that I can call on public, people who would like to make a public comment. If you would like to make a public comment and you're in person, please go out and fill out a slip of paper over there and then hand it in, and then I can call on you. If you're on Zoom and you would like to make a public comment, we'll put the directions up again to raise your hand, and we'll be taking comments both online and in person. Thank you. Thank you for asking for clarification. Okay, please, go ahead.
Great. Thank you. So, good evening, Chair Clemens and members of the Planning and Transportation Commission. My name is Rendell Bustos. I am a senior planner in the Advanced Planning Division, and I'm pleased to introduce the next agenda item, which is a study session for the public draft of the Northeast Area Specific Plan, which is an exciting milestone in the planning process for this specific plan, a culmination of several years of public input, input from the commission and the city council, as well as close involvement from our consultant team, which you'll hear about this evening. So just to start by introducing whom from the project team is present this evening, so in addition to myself, we have staff from the Community Development Department, as well as Mark Asness from Perkins &amp; Will, which is the city's prime consultant for the specific plan, who will provide an overview of the various chapters of the plan. Just a quick overview of tonight's study session. The presentation will include an introduction to the plan itself, as well as its vision and how we arrived there, as well as an overview of three of the core chapters of the specific plan. So those are land use in urban form, mobility and parking, and environmental resilience, that all together guide the vision of the specific plan. Then we'll cover next steps that are involved in working toward adoption of the plan, and just, as was noted, a reminder to the commission and to the public that this is a study session, which does not involve any formal decision-making, so we're really here for your input. So to provide an overview of the specific plan, I'll pass it to Mark Asness.
Thank you, Rendell. Good evening, commissioners. As Rendell mentioned, my name is Mark Asness. I'm with the design firm Perkins &amp; Will. I'm the project manager for the consultant team, and thank you for having me today to be able to speak to the Northeast Area Specific Plan. Before I get started with the slides, I just want to say, you know, with this major milestone of the release of the public draft, it's been an absolute honor to be able to work on a project of such importance and to have been able to have collaborated with such exceptional individuals from the city of San Carlos. So it's really been an incredible experience, and I look forward to receiving your guidance and your input so we can move this project to the finish line. So with that, what is the Northeast Area Specific Plan? Just a quick project refresher. Well, in very simple terms, it's a 20-year framework for guiding development and investment within the 145-acre Northeast Area Plan, Northeast Area. We want this future growth within this area to align with community priorities, as well as the goals, the policies, the actions of the city's general plan. And in terms of location of where the specific plan applies, the name is apt, as this area is located in the northeastern corner of the city, bounded by the Caltrain berm to the west, the Harbor Industrial Area, and the city of Belmont to the south, the Highway 101 to the east, and then the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood and the Eastside Innovation District to the north. So with any long-range planning effort, it is a reasonable question to ask why. Why engage in this type of planning effort? Why think about this area? Well, I can distill it into three key reasons. The first is San Carlos is growing, as you all know, and the city's east side has seen exceptional development interest in recent years, primarily in life science and biotech, and this interest will continue in the future, and we need to be, make sure that we're prepared and we're intentional and responsible with how to leverage this growth. The second is that the Northeast Area, while geographically close to two Caltrain stations, downtown San Carlos, El Camino Real, it actually has very poor connectivity, and the streets as currently designed within the district do not have modal hierarchy. There is a lack of sense of how people should be moving through, both through the district and then connect to other parts of the city. In addition, property owners and business owners have really said that there needs to be a parking management strategy within this district to make sure that existing businesses can operate as needed with parking supply, but also make sure that as the district continues to grow and change, that we're be able to effectively mitigate unintended negative consequences when it comes to new users coming into the district. And as our transportation consultants have said about the Northeast Area, it's not about a parking supply. There's not a parking supply problem. It's a parking management problem. So we really put forward that type of strategy, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. And then finally, the impacts of climate change in the Northeast Area are real. In recent years, we've seen extreme weather events. We've seen king tides from the bay that have led to extensive flooding and significant property damage, and this is going to continue happening in the district, and there needs to be a coordinated effort in terms of how to be able to put up proper defense measures. And so just to drive that point home, this planning effort, we've been leading with resilience since the very beginning of the project, and this map that you see here from 1850, it was like, it was a revelation for us when we started this project, because as you can see, the red outline is the boundary of the Northeast Area. Majority, historically, of this area was the historic San Francisco Bay shoreline, and you'll see the Belmont Creek traversing through the site itself. This is low-lying terrain. This is, naturally wants to be wetlands. It wants to be, it wants to flood. That is the natural morphology of the site, so we really need to think about a multifaceted effort to be able to mitigate these types of weather events. So I've talked about the what, I've talked about the where, I've talked about the why we're doing this. So now I'm going to talk about the how. How are we going to address these existing conditions, which is really the majority of what I will be talking about today, and it really starts with these six guiding principles that we established at the very onset of the plan. Celebrate the industrial legacy, calibrate the right mix of uses, improve access for all modes of transportation, champion district resiliency, address flooding and environmental issues, and develop district parking strategies. And these six guiding principles, we've expanded upon them, we've codified them. They are now a part of our public draft for the Northeast Area Specific Plan, about 200 pages of, that's organized into seven chapters: introduction, the vision, existing conditions, land use in- Introduction, the vision, existing conditions, land use and urban form standards, mobility and parking standards, environmental resilience standards, implementation, which is still under development. For the commission's knowledge, we are going in front of the Infrastructure Financing Subcommittee on Friday to get guidance on our funding and financing recommendations, as well as our community benefits memo. And of course, the success of this plan has been absolutely paramount with deep community engagement. And the city, leading the effort with the consultant team as support, we have conducted a multi-year public involvement campaign, which has included online surveys, virtual focus groups, in-person pop-up events and open house events, project updates to neighborhood groups, virtual workshops where we talk through different scenarios, different design elements, really engaged on what community members would like to see for the future of this area. PTC study sessions, thank you for your feedback, as well as city council study sessions. And this community feedback has informed and is integrated, seamlessly integrated into our vision and our urban design framework for 2045, which, as Rendell mentioned, is really defined by updates to zoning and land use, a new multimodal street network, as well as a multi-pronged, multifaceted resilient strategy. And I'll talk more in detail in the upcoming slides. So starting with chapter four, our land use and urban form chapter, a couple of key things to mention on how the plan responds to these existing conditions. One is, we are maintaining a majority of the district to allow for the permitted land uses that are already allowed within the district in the light industrial and industrial-professional zone. Those will continue to be allowed within the district today. The plan has made efforts to ensure that critical infrastructure, like PG&E and Palo Alto Medical Foundation, can continue to operate and grow within the district for years to come. We've expanded on our existing zoning with regulations for the ground floor in terms of requirements for retail at key intersections, key gateways, opportunities for new development to provide small-scale industrial spaces, as well as a broader allowance of active uses across the district itself. But maybe the most consequential change as a part of the land use within the specific plan is the changing of the southwest corner of the district to a mixed-use zoning district. So at the beginning of this plan, city council directed the city staff and by proxy the consultant team to explore the feasibility of integrating housing into the Northeast Area. And as part of this process, we determined that the most viable place for residential mixed use is located in the southwest corner that is either gold or light yellow, as seen in this image on screen here, due to its proximity to the San Carlos Caltrain Station downtown, as well as the transition to the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood. And as part of this planning effort, we developed a 20-year development projection. This is very high-level modeling. Obviously, for 20 years, it's a very high-level forecast, but it's very important to have this projection for the concurrent SEQA environmental review that is being done in parallel with the specific plan. Some things to note is that, you know, we do see an increase in R&amp;D development. We see an increase in general light industrial. But you also see a forecast of about 1,890 residential units within that southwestern portion of the district. And again, this is forecast, high level, and it's for our 20-year projection. So just as comparison for the commission, what you see on the screen here is existing land use designation. So today, as part of the general plan, the entire district is designated as planned industrial. What we're proposing is that a majority of the district would remain a planned industrial land use designation, with that southwestern corner being changed to a mixed-use 75 to 90 dwelling units per acre designation. And in terms of existing zoning of what's allowed today, you'll see that predominantly the parcels that are west of industrial road are light industrial zoning. There are select sites that are east of industrial road that are industrial-professional, and then there are specific sites that are under a planned development agreement. And then as part of our proposed zoning, we have put forward a new zoning district called Production and Innovation, which brings together the permitted land uses that are allowed both in the light industrial and the industrial-professional zones today into one zoning district, and now enhancing them with ground floor regulations, as well as new development standards to ensure that new development is aligned with the larger vision for the district itself. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. But then you'll see that the PG&E site remains industrial-professional zoning. The planned development sites will continue to be under a planned development agreement. The area that's bounded by Old County Road, Brigado Road, Glen Way, and Taylor Way will become a mixed-use Northeast 90 zoning district. And then the area that is south of Taylor Way becomes a mixed-use Northeast 75 zoning district. And the MUNE 90 is intended for medium-to-hire-density residential with select areas for retail and active uses. And then the MUNE 75 is intended for lower-to-medium-density residential with an area on the corner of Old County and Taylor Way for retail and allowances for active uses on the ground floor. Now diving a little more into those ground floor active uses, there's really three key components that are included in the plan. One is at three key gateways throughout the district, industrial road and Quarry Road, Quarry Road and Old County Road, and Old County Road and Taylor Way, there is a requirement for new development to provide ground floor retail at the corners of those intersections. The next is that any new development along Quarry Road would provide small-scale industrial, artisan, and manufacturing uses. These are small-scale workshops and light industrial spaces. We have designated Quarry Road as our quote-unquote "industrial main street", and we think it's important to be able to celebrate and bring more small-scale industrial uses on the ground floor while allowing for more flexibility of what can be built up above. And then finally, there is a very broad allowance for what we refer to as ground floor active uses throughout the district. This is allowed, but not required. So it could include a retail establishment, a food and beverage establishment, but it could also include professional services or light industrial spaces or a variety of different types of uses, because what we ultimately want is a diverse and varied, transparent and welcoming ground floor and street experience. So that's ultimately what we're trying to put forward with this ground floor active use allowance. So now, taking a moment to talk about publicly accessible open spaces, I think it's important to note that currently, within the Northeast Area, there are zero parks or open spaces. Zero. Makes sense. It's historically and continues to be an industrial district. But when we see the forecasts for change, new users, new types of development, and also thinking about from a resilience standpoint, we need Softscape to be able to manage flooding and just larger stormwater management. We need to ensure that new development is contributing to providing an open space network for the district. So as part of the specific plan, we are requiring with new development that is over 15,000 square feet, about 0.3 acres, that 10% of the site would be allocated for a publicly accessible open space. For a development that is over one acre, 15% of the total site area would be allocated for a publicly accessible open space. And there are design standards that are embedded in the plan that talk about the multifunctional quality of these spaces. Yes, they're for people. These are supposed to be great places for people, working, living, visiting the district. But they're also opportunities to think about performative landscapes, managing stormwater, thinking about habitat opportunities, mitigating of urban heat island. There are a lot of ways in which we can think about this to achieve multiple objectives from a sustainability and resilience standpoint. The other thing I want to put forward is that throughout the planning process, the city, the community has vocalized a desire for a public park. And it's been amplified with further conversations from city staff and city leadership that this could be a great opportunity. And so what we're putting forward as part of this plan, and you'll see it on the star on the graphic that's on the screen, is that with new development in the mixed-use Northeast 90 zoning district, that when this would be redeveloped, that there would be an agreement in coordination with the city to allocate land that would become a public park that would be owned and operated by the city. And it makes sense when you think about it from integrating of residential development and different types of users and change that there would be a public park in this district in the future. So now moving into floor area ratio and density. For our non-residential development in the production and innovation and the industrial-professional zones, we have assigned a maximum floor area ratio, an FAR. And across the board, we have generally increased the FAR allocation for properties. It's important to note that non-residential projects, they have an increased FAR, but there is going to be a cap in terms of the maximum height. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. But we have a base floor area ratio allocation, and then we are allowing for a bonus FAR. So in return, non-residential development is eligible for additional density floor area ratio in return for a community benefit. And there is no bonus FAR cap in terms of that bonus. Residential development has assigned a minimum dwelling unit per acre density requirement. However, there is no bonus that is, there's no bonus density for the residential. It's a minimum density requirement of either 90 dwelling units per acre or 75 dwelling units per acre. And then in terms of height standards, there is maximum building heights across the district that range from 75 feet to 100 feet. And it's important to note that this is consistent with what is currently allowed within the existing zoning code in the district today. Now, like FAR, non-residential development is permitted or will be eligible for additional height in return for a community benefit. We would max out at 155 feet as we need to be in compliance with the San Carlos Airport FAA regulations. So that is the maximum envelope that would be allowed. And you'll see that maximum heights along the east side of industrial road are around 100 feet. We have 75 feet on predominantly the areas that are, excuse me, west of industrial road, and then the MUNE 90 residential mixed-use area is a 90-foot maximum building height. So while the MUNE 75 zone has a height allowance of 75 feet, it's really important that we have put forward development standards that require a step down to 35 feet when a building is within 130 feet of the rear lot line, abutting the 50-foot drainage easement that is adjacent to the residential properties on Northwood Drive. We really have wanted to ensure that we are being deferential and respectful to the existing single-family fabric. So with the 50-foot easement, a 30-foot rear landscape setback, and then an additional 35-foot step down of 100 feet, that's a 180-foot distance between where the 75-foot building ends and where potentially the single-family home begins. So it's close to, for reference, I always like, it's close to a Portland city block in terms of the distance between 75 feet and where the single-family home, as if that's a point of reference. So in terms of comparison between the existing height and the proposed height, existing height, what's currently allowed in the district today, light industrial, 75 feet allowed today, industrial-professional zone, 100 feet. Planned development, it's varied depending on the planned development agreement. In terms of what we're proposing in the production and innovation zone, it really varies. There are certain areas where it's 75-foot base with a bonus of 100 feet. Those are the sites that are directly adjacent to the residential zones, residential mixed-use zones. And then certain areas where you have 100-foot base and 155-foot bonus. Industrial-professional will remain 100 feet, as allowed currently within the district. Our mixed-use Northeast 90 zoning district would have a maximum height of 90 feet. And our mixed-use Northeast 75 would have a maximum height of 75 feet, with that step-down requirement that I just mentioned. And then in terms of existing versus proposed FAR in density, light industrial zone today allows for a 0.5 FAR max with 1.0 FAR for project sites more than one acre. Industrial-professional allows 2.0 FAR. Planned development, again, varies. But we are increasing in the production and innovation zone so that it would range between 1.0, 1.5, or 2.0, depending on its location within the district itself. Again, there's no cap for bonus. They can increase the density, but there will always be a height envelope and development standards that a project would need to adhere to. Industrial-professional would have a 2.0 FAR, but no bonus. And then residential development is not regulated by FAR. It's regulated by DU per acre. The mixed-use Northeast 90 would have 90 DU per acre, and the mixed-use Northeast 75 would have 75 DU per acre. And now I'm going to pass it to Rendell to talk about non-conforming uses.
Thanks, Mark. So given the interests and the questions that staff has received over time from business owners and property owners in the Northeast Area, I wanted to highlight how non-conforming uses or grandfathered uses would be treated in the specific plan. So because of the land use changes that are contemplated in the plan that Mark covered, adoption of the plan would cause non-conforming uses, where uses that exist today would not be allowed in the future if the plan is adopted. So an example of that is a site that's zoned for industrial that would then be zoned for residential. So to provide criteria for how these uses would be treated, the specific plan really refers to our zoning code, which has a chapter focused on non-conforming uses and structures, which we call the non-conforming code. So instead of reinventing new requirements, we figured we'd look at requirements that stand today, and we do find that they do work. So one of the key questions that we've heard often is, you know, can my business remain? So as shown on this slide, this kind of shows the sequencing of how we would treat those uses. So as shown on this slide, non-conforming uses may continue as long as there's no addition or alteration proposed, and that expands that use. Ownership and tenants can also change out, as long as the use remains the same. Lastly, if the use, however, vacates or lapses for a period of six months or more, the owner really has two paths. They could provide a conforming use, which could involve redevelopment. Understanding that that could be a big burden, the code already allows a path to obtain a conditional use permit, which is a discretionary path that would go before the Planning and Transportation Commission, that they could seek to reestablish the use if the use lapses for six months or more. So through this sequencing and through our existing code, staff believes that, you know, there's paths forward and that there's sufficient requirements to balance, you know, wanting our plan to come through fruition and to have conforming uses, but balancing that uses may want to continue, even though they may not be permitted to with the adoption of the plan. And I'll pass it back to Mark.
Okay, I'm back to talk about chapter five, Mobility and Parking. This plan, we have put forward a multimodal intentional street network that really aims to both provide, first and foremost, safety and predictability for to both provide, first and foremost, safety and predictability for vehicular users and freight users that are in the district today, but equally so, really looking toward the future, looking toward low-carbon mobility, and encouraging active transportation through safe, low-stress, both pedestrian and bicycle facilities, which I'll talk about in a minute. So in terms of the larger street network, a couple of major design interventions as part of the street network. One is we are adding a new public street segment between Quarry Road and Brigado Road. You'll see it, it's kind of, it's highlighted in that green fill. Essentially, it's helping to create an additional north-south street in the middle of the district itself to help provide more distribution of trips throughout the district. We're putting forward several very important roadway safety measures, one being a new signalized intersection at the intersection of Industrial Road and Taylor Way, as well as several mid-block crossings that would have either flash or hybrid beacons. And then finally, our transportation consultants have really looked at the extents of all of the street frontages, and we've put forward a regulation of the curb zone, which would include paid and permitted on-street parking, designated commercial loading zones, as well as mobility hubs, to help support people biking or potentially scootering for local trips throughout the district, but also really informing that first mile, last mile from the Northeast area to the Caltrain station to ensure that we are advocating for transit ridership and just thinking about the shift in our mode split. And then in terms of active mobility, we're building off of the adopted pedestrian and bicycle master plan that was adopted in 2020, specifically putting forward protected bikeways on Industrial Road, Taylor Way, and Old County Road to really build on the East Side Connect project. We have proposed new publicly accessible paseos, which are identified in that purple arrow on the drawing that you see on the screen, which would allow for greater porosity and connectivity throughout the district, as well as a multi-use trail along Belmont Creek that would be built out as part of new development for properties along the creek. It's embedded in our development standards. So just a couple of examples of some of the conceptual street designs that are included in the specific plan, the first one being Industrial Road. We're proposing a road diet and a reconfiguration of the street. It would still have two-way traffic lanes with a center turn lane. However, we're now designating an 11-foot multi-use curb zone to provide both safer crossings at intersections, places for on-street parking, as well as space for enhanced green infrastructure and street tree canopy. We have put forward bidirectional protected bike lanes on both sides of the street, as well as significantly widened the sidewalk. And now looking at Old County Road, still preserving two-way traffic along the Caltrain berm, but now in lieu of what is currently a parking aisle, we're putting forward a buffered protected bike lane to continue the East Side Connect project, as well as providing a multi-use curb zone for street trees, for green infrastructure, for an assortment of different types of street furnishings or the mobility hub, as well as widening the sidewalk. And then finally, Taylor Way, very similar and asymmetrical type of street design, two-way traffic, an opportunity for stormwater, enhanced stormwater treatment and tree canopy, a two-way protected bike lane, which we have put on the southern end of the street. We wanted to put it on the side that is zoned for mixed-use zoning, as opposed to the side that is zoned for production and innovation, as well as a widened sidewalk. Now moving into vehicular parking standards, we, there are a couple of things that we should really note, because we have upgraded our parking standards for the district itself. We are in compliance with MTC TOC policy, which means that there are no minimum parking requirements within the district. However, we have put forward parking maximums. We have a tiered approach. So as you can see on the table on the screen, we have designated per different land use classifications either a Tier 1 parking, maximum parking limit. Tier 1 is what we would refer to as a soft maximum, which says that a developer and applicant can build that amount of parking by right. However, they are eligible for additional parking, which would be the Tier 2 parking limit, but that would come with specific conditions. For example, that additional parking would have to be shared across the district. And so that's part of a larger goal, to create a shared parking program where we can be more efficient with the parking supply within the district. I think the last thing we want is to overpark this district with each individual development and really allow for different parking supply to be used by different users at different times of the day, different times of the week and weekend. And then finally, there's a policy for unbundled parking requirements for both non-residential and residential development to separate with, if somebody is to lease a property or rent down an apartment, they don't necessarily need to pay for a parking spot if they don't own a car. This would, again, allow for a more efficiency with parking supply, but also allow for more affordability, especially from a residential standpoint. And then for all new development, they have to adhere to a transportation demand management menu. This is, this TDM plan is kind of being done concurrently with the citywide TDM policy. We will, of course, match what will ultimately be determined as part of the citywide effort. But as part of this district, we have TDM requirements. It's a point system, so whether you're a residential development, a non-residential development, if you're a small project or a large project, there is a certain amount of points that you need to achieve as part of approval for your project. And you'll see in the table on the screen, each of the TDM strategies is assigned a certain amount of points. Now our final chapter, Chapter 6, Environmental Resilience. Actually, that's not true. It's our second-to-last chapter. But this is incredibly important. As I've stated earlier in the presentation, we need to be thinking about flooding, future sea level rise, but also extreme heat, just ensuring that it's both an environmental impact that we need to think about, but also just larger quality of life. This is going to be achieved in a multifaceted approach. It's going to be achieved through improvements in underground utilities. It's going to be thought through in the way in which we're designing our streets and our public spaces. It's about development standards and raising new development above a base floor elevation, base flood elevation, excuse me, and really thinking about this from a multi-prong approach. And so there are certain district-wide resiliency standards that will apply for all development within the district. There's open space dedication, which I've spoken about earlier. There's landscaping requirements. There's stormwater management requirements. There's requirements for applicants to coordinate with both the City of San Carlos, but also One Shoreline to assess groundwater rise vulnerability for their property and determine what are context-specific interventions that will support the larger district, as well as, as I mentioned, new development standards that will assess raising the finished floor elevation to protect against both flooding as well as sea level rise. And then our streets, it's more than just about multimodal hierarchy and mobility and access. It's also thinking about this as an opportunity to serve as defense for future flooding events and sea level rise. Our multi-use curb zones, which I've spoken about, are intentionally generous to be able to accommodate enhanced stormwater infrastructure, and this is good. We need to provide that space with our streets because as part of C3 requirements that would apply for any new road or sidewalks or bike lanes that exceed 5,000 square feet, they need to be able to manage stormwater on-site. That is a requirement. And so just making sure that there's space within the public right-of-way to accommodate that. We also, as part of our standards, are asking applicants to refer to the San Mateo County Wide Green Infrastructure Design Guide. It's an excellent document that has very specific design interventions that really make sense for this context. And so really using that as a reference to complement the standards that are in the specific plan. So those are district-wide, larger types of interventions for resilience. But we've also established specific priority zones. So the first one is our sea level rise priority zone. These are the properties that, as you can see back from that historic map from 1850, are really a part of the historic San Francisco Bay shoreline. They are naturally low-lying terrain, the lowest in the district, and naturally want to be wetlands. So thinking about, within the specific plan, additional flooding adaptation standards. If a property is directly adjacent to one of the existing drainage channels, there is a requirement for a natural buffer setback. For open space dedication, there's a requirement for engineered detention basins to be a part of the design of that open space. And then this is not a standard, it's a guideline. It's highly encouraged for any surface parking lots to have permeable paving and going above and beyond the green infrastructure that would be required to be able to support larger stormwater management. And then creekfront zone are the properties that are directly abutting the Belmont Creek. So for each of those developments, if a new development was to be proposed, there would be a required 35-foot setback from the existing creek top of bank. This would then, 25 feet of that 35-foot setback would be required to be native riparian vegetation, and then there would be a 10-foot multi-use pathway that would help create that Belmont Creek Trail and Greenway that we spoke about earlier. And then as part of the development standards for new development, the open space dedication, at least 50%, shall directly abut the Belmont Creek Greenway to help both expand and widen the area where, if there was a flooding event, it could help absorb that water, but also just create a more dynamic and more interesting open space. So now finally, implementation chapter, as I mentioned, it's still in progress. These are the contents of what are going to be part of that implementation chapter. We have civil infrastructure improvement recommendations, so storm drain, sanitary sewer, domestic water, electric and telecom infrastructure. This has been led by BKF, our civil engineers. It's been very closely developed with the city's Public Works Department. So really thinking about what are the priority infrastructure investments in terms of underground utilities and how to integrate it into the capital improvement plan, our community benefits framework and menu. What are the priorities for an applicant who's eligible for additional density? How would they then deliver that density with tangible community benefits? Is it a fee? Is it improvements in parks, streets, affordable housing? That's something that we're still developing, and as I mentioned, we're going to the Infrastructure Financing Committee on Friday to get their feedback on that menu, as well as a larger funding and financing matrices with available funding sources. So potential impact fees, the establishment of a community facilities district, allocation of the general fund, capital improvement plan, and a parking benefit district. There is intentionality on when these funds of money could potentially be used for certain investments in the larger district, and that's being led by Strategic Economics, who are our economists on the project. So in closing, I wanted to just go back to our six guiding principles. Celebrate the industrial legacy, calibrate the right mix of uses, improve access for all modes of transportation, champion district resiliency, address flooding and environmental issues, and develop district parking strategies. This has been our guiding, you know, our North Star. We have really referenced these and wanted to make sure that as we've developed the specific plan, the development standards, the guidelines, and the implementation measures, that we never lose sight of where we started with this project and what we were intending to do. And with that, we put forward our vision for 2045 to ensure that we have a 20-year development and investment framework for responsible incremental growth that really aligns with the priorities of the community and the city's general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thanks, Randall.
Just a couple of slides left, just to conclude our next steps. Just as a reminder, we're requesting commission feedback to provide staff and the consultant team as we approach finalizing the specific plan, which is obviously a very dense document. So staff will also be meeting, as Mark mentioned, with the City Council Subcommittee, the Infrastructure Financing Committee, to refine the implementation chapter. We'll also bring all of this feedback that we receive from the community and from the commission to a city council study session in May. And in the background, we'll continue working on the specific plan's associated EIR, Environmental Impact Report, and then ultimately finalize the specific plan and the EIR together to bring to adoption as early as the September, October timeframe. And I also wanted to leave on the screen here the project website, as well as contact information in case members of the public wanted to review the document further or provide questions or comments following this meeting. And so just to bring it to a close, to help facilitate questions or comments, staff didn't have any specific questions. However, we would offer that the commission could consider grouping questions into key subject matters or chapters, as suggested on this slide, so that they're broken up by the different chapters. So land use, mobility, and parking, environmental resilience, and then a catch-all for any other topics. It's a dense document, as I said, so it might be helpful for staff and the consultant team just to receive them in a grouping if possible. This concludes SASS's presentation. Happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Randall. Thank you, Mark. Really edifying, interesting presentation, and a lot of work done on this plan, so thank you for that. This evening, I'd actually like to start with any comments or questions from the public so that as the commission then asks clarifying questions, they can choose to, you know, elaborate a little further on any questions that they hear, they might not have thought of. And so we wanted to kind of sequence it like that. So at this point, I'd like to open up the public comment period on the study session on the Northeast Area Specific Plan Draft. If you would like to make a public comment, please fill out a request-to-speak form that's over in the back of the chambers and submit to city staff, to Andrea, or you can raise your hand when, either way, when we go through the slips, and then we'll go to people who had not submitted a slip. If you're on Zoom, there are directions on the screen, if you can see that, but the Zoom meeting is meeting ID 88635467439. You can join Zoom and then virtually raise your hand by clicking on reactions and then the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine on the phone, on the phone number here, 669-900-9128, to get into the Zoom meeting. So I'd like to start with comments from people live in the chambers, and then we'll go to comments online, if any. You're also free to ask questions, whatever you'd like, but we don't, staff will not be answering questions directly unless one of the commissioners asks for further clarification and picks up one of those questions. But we're happy to hear your feedback and your questions and your thoughts. So with that, I'd like to start here in council chambers with Anatoly Chikinov, if I pronounced that correctly.
What's up?
How'd I do? You have to tell me. So welcome, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and staff. Thank you for the presentation. I actually had a chance to look over it in kind of more detail, took a look at it, it looks pretty good. I actually live in Greater East San Carlos neighborhood, so kind of directly close to it. So I have a couple of concerns and questions that I didn't necessarily see addressed in the plan. So one of the key components that you mentioned that will be increased housing in that city, obviously, we do need some more housing, but my concern is that it references being joined to the Caltrain station. And one of my concerns is that even the sidewalks directly in Greater East San Carlos neighborhoods, they're not wide enough. And the intersection between San Carlos Avenue and Old County Road, very narrow intersection, could really use an underpass or an overpass in order to speed up the traffic flow significantly because you're constantly stuck there for three, four, five minutes during rush hour, and it's just not a pleasant intersection to walk through, period. So I would deem it very unsafe. I see- I see kids there all the time, I see cars going like 40, 50 miles an hour blasting through that intersection. So something that can either underpass and overpass, given that you're adding 1,900 units of housing, that should be considered as part of the requirement. And the second comment I want to mention is, if we are adding this much housing, San Carlos doesn't have a high school. So back, years back, there was a big planning decision that was made, it was a mistake where they closed down the school, comes back to bite it quite a few years down the road. And I think this is a missed opportunity over here, not to consider one of the larger parcels over there and actually allow the space for a high school to be created. Because right now, you're being fed, half of San Carlos is being fed in the Sequoia, and if you proposition there, that half goes to Carmen. So it would be better, for the community's sake, to actually keep all the kids together as part of San Carlos. You're growing up in San Carlos district, and then you're getting split up. So that's another consideration that I think was missed as part of the plan. So I think if these two items would be studied by staff, I think this is an excellent opportunity to make some improvements there in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Damon Naime, who lives in San Carlos. Oh, and also is with GW Williams. Welcome.
Thank you. I actually brought some visual aids with me. I'll add these to you.
I could do, I didn't open my package, so thank you.
Would you like?
It's pretty.
Everyone has one?
Thank you.
Would you like to pass this around, please? Pass it on to the bathroom? Thank you.
There's a visual.
All right. I have a prepared statement.
Okay, great. You have two minutes.
Okay. The goal for the Northeast Pacific Plan is to add much-needed housing to the city of San Carlos. This area is the only logical place in the city where denser housing can be added to meet the 2031 timeline, as laid out by the state of California. At the current 90-foot height limit, the study group is considering the greater goal of 27, or 2,735 housing units will not be met. Moreover, the proposed zone will not produce a project that will incentivize the existing owner or any developer to scrap a well-maintained, profitable industrial park. The city must reconsider their currently contemplated 90-foot height restriction for mixed-use development to be vibrant and successful. It must be supported by both sufficient housing and enough appropriate businesses, which need to come online at the same time. GW Williams Company, which has owned and operated the majority of the land within the Northeast Pacific Plan for nearly 60 years, is amenable to working with the city to create this vision. Our company is also willing to incorporate a Union Square, so to speak, as an open space, which will be an enormous benefit to the new community. Instead of the typical urban sprawl, a well-planned, mixed-use community with the height necessary to add needed housing, more open space could be brought to San Carlos. Together, we can create a brighter future for those who want to live and play near their work without negatively impacting the current businesses in San Carlos.
Great, thank you. You have a couple more seconds if you want to add anything.
That's plenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Damon. Appreciate your comments. Great. Is there anyone else in council chambers who would like to make a comment or ask a question this evening? Please.
Hi, I'm Lori Berger. I'm an attorney.
Thank you.
I have one, just a question for clarification. On the Paseos, there's one, the one that I'm specifically interested is the one that extends Brigado Road, well, goes from Brigado Road to Industrial. And I just wanted clarification on, on page 173 of the draft, it says that the shared Paseo will be 26 feet wide with five-foot setback on each side. And I just wanted to clarify if that was the intention for all three of these proposed Paseos.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your question and your careful reading all the way to page 173. Very good. She gets a star for the evening. Thank you. And next, I'd like to call up Carolyn Shepherd. She's here. Welcome, Carolyn. Thank you. You have two minutes. Welcome.
Okay, first, great presentation. I was very impressed, so. My name is Carolyn Shepherd, and I actually live in Belmont in really close proximity to the area that this project addresses, over there in Homeview Neighborhood. And in your draft presentation, I'm pleased to see that a residential planning is part of your vision with the two mixed-use areas. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the extremely low-income population that is really a part of all city housing elements plans. And this is a population that includes different circumstances that people are living with, and I'm here addressing the needs of those with mental health disabilities and who have some level of independence but require affordable, permanent supportive housing. I have a son whom my husband and I adopted through San Mateo County. He was born with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder and has cognitive and emotional issues as a result. And then my husband passed away in 2007, and I'm caring for my son on my own. He needs a permanent supportive housing situation once. I am no longer able to care for him. I am also the president of the nonprofit called Solutions for Supportive Homes, which was formed by parents who are supporting their adult children with mental health disabilities. And our children need affordable supportive housing to take care of them. Today, there are simply not enough housing options available for our families in San Mateo County. The one-point-in-time count gives us a number of those who are currently homeless and suffering from mental illness, but not of the number of adults living with parents, particularly aging parents, and who therefore are at risk of homelessness. We worked collaboratively with a doctoral student at USF who shared a tool available now in the Health Computer Program, which is used by the Behavioral Health Recovery Services and the Health Plan of San Mateo, so that we should start to get some data on housing situations, you know, broadly beyond those on the street for 2025. And as you describe the benefits of the area with regards to the amenities, we do encourage you to proactively recommend inclusion of those with disabilities and in need of onsite support to be a part of the residential units you foresee being built here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I appreciate it. Actually, while you're up here, I just wanted to see if you could name again where the, you said there was a site helped by USF that you could see more statistics. Did you want to repeat where that's located?
Yes, so we collaborated with University of San Francisco Nursing Practitioner Program. We said, we went to, we don't have any data. And in your housing elements, I'm sure Housing Choices provided you with the DD population, but there is no data on those that are caring for mental health clients, children. Same situation. We're not, I'm getting really old now, you know, so, not getting older by the day with my son and my home. But anyway, so we collaborated with the university, and we have a doctoral student that we began to look for data, and there was no data. And she works in a hospital with a mental health clinic, and there is, in their program, it's called, something called Z codes. And if you pursue a little further than, you know, the first or two questions, you can find out, you know, how many of your clients are actually living at home with parents. And some of these parents are 80s, you know, 90s, 70s, you know, it's not sustainable. So to plan for the future, it's really important to get an idea of how many of these people are in the wings and where, and need a variety. It's not one-size-fits-all options, but there are very few in San Mateo County.
At risk of homelessness. Thank you for calling our attention to it. We appreciate it. Great. I'd like to call up Leslie Wambach. Hi, Leslie, welcome. You have two minutes.
Okay, I'll try to be really fast because I really need two and a half. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Leslie Wambach, and I'm a longtime member and volunteer for NAMI San Mateo County and an advocate for Solutions for Supportive Homes. Like Carolyn, I have decades of lived experience supporting family members with mental health disabilities. I'm also an architect with housing development expertise and a former planning commissioner and Affordable Housing Committee member for the city of San Carlos. At this stage of my life, my focus is to use this experience to encourage the creation of more permanent supportive housing. I've witnessed, close up throughout my life, the myriad of reasons why permanent supportive housing is so vital to the health and sustained recovery of our most vulnerable family members and citizens, those living with significant disabilities, mental health, cognitive, intellectual, and physical. Many of these community members live on extremely limited fixed incomes, placing them in the 30% or less tier of area median income, which correlates to the lowest tier of housing element affordability, the acutely extremely low category, well below someone working a full-time minimum wage job. This population is at very high risk of becoming homeless. Sadly, some are already homeless. To say it plainly, saying no to supportive housing means saying yes to continued housing insecurity and homelessness for our vulnerable family members and loved ones. We see the NEASP, that's what I call it, area, as a huge opportunity to do right by our disabled family members and to create more projects like this one, Kelsey Air Station in downtown San Jose. Sorry. But to get deeply affordable projects like this one with supportive services off the ground, financial support is absolutely necessary in the pre-development phase. So we ask that you get behind this effort by making a bold recommendation to your city council to institute concrete incentives for the creation of permanent supportive housing in this area. I'm submitting a list along with the, this visual, well, I can't, it's here, my list of concrete suggestions that you could put forth to your city council.
Thank you, Leslie.
Okay, this lowest tier.
We're all over time, so I just wanted to finish up.
It really requires this extra effort in order to get built, and we hope that you'll seize this opportunity and help lead the way so that our most vulnerable community members can live safe and productive lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So here are five copies.
Appreciate your knowledge and sharing, sharing information. Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers who would like to make a public comment or ask a question at this time? Okay, seeing none. Lynette, do we have hands raised on Zoom?
Yes, we have two. The first one, first person is Sam.
Okay, great. Welcome, Sam. Glad you're still here, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Again, I'm the greater, I'm the co-president of the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood and have been participating in the development of this plan. In our general, we are generally supportive of, of the plan. Have some specific comments? I made comments before about toxic sites, and, you know, San Carlos was Silicon Valley before Silicon Valley, and we have the legacy of toxics in the ground to prove it. And as you can see, there are water, water rise issues, there's stormwater issues. It's really important that, as these sites that have toxics, as identified by the Regional Water Quality Control Board GeoTracker website, that these are cleaned up completely and not capped. Because if you don't cap, if you just cap them, the toxics are stored in the soil and are leaching in the groundwater, and you can create a storm. I, I work for the county, and I helped develop the green infrastructure design plan that was referenced. And if you have toxics leaching into your stormwater, they're going to pop up in your facilities that you're trying to deal with to address, you know, stormwater. So you really have to clean up these sites. The city needs some guidance language regarding expectations for developers and property and, and for city staff, that there's, there's a clear expectation of what the city of San Carlos expects for cleanup of these sites, so that they are not just capped. I'm very concerned about what's happening at Alexandria and 789 Old County Road, where that's being proposed, and the toxics are going to be left in the ground, leaching into the groundwater and into the San Francisco Bay. So I think that's an omission from this plan. I think there needs to be some policy language developed by the city council and the Planning Commission to provide clarity about, about these sites. I'm also want to just relate concerns about the access from Taylor into, on Fairfield, into our neighborhood. We've conveyed concerns about, you know, if parking's not provided in the innovation in the Northeast Plan, that people are going to be parking in our neighborhood. And we've seen that with the Transit Village, which is why we have permit parking in our neighborhood. And we just, it's a concern that we have to make sure parking stays where the parking use should be in the Northeast Plan. I saw community benefits were identified, and the Greater East San Carlos has definitely has, would like to be part of the discussion about community benefits and the lack of green space. So we hope to be included in the, in the future discussions. Appreciate your comments, and I do look forward to the new park that's, that's being proposed. We would just like to be part of the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Sam. I appreciate your comments. Great. Lynette, do we have other hands raised on Zoom?
Yes, we have one more. Patricia.
Patricia, thanks.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome, and we have two minutes.
Okay, hello, I'm the parent of a young man living with a mental illness who resides at Cordilleras Mental Health Rehab Center on the border of San Carlos and Redwood City. Our bi-weekly lunch dates are spent in both communities. We love the Walgreens next to Trader Joe's, but know that the CVS on San Carlos Avenue will probably have any items we can't find there. When we found we couldn't take our walks at Pogus Water Temple on Sundays, we discovered the beautiful jewel of a park off of Crest View, where we now regularly do two loops around the track after our weekend lunches. My son has also spent many happy hours at California Clubhouse when it was located on Industrial in San Carlos. These visits ended with trips to the In-N-Out, also in San Carlos, for fries before the return to Cordilleras. My son is currently working towards living in the local community again. For myself, I am grateful for the San Carlos Sutter Health Facility on Industrial, where I can receive services when I cannot at my local care center. I'm telling you all of this because even though my son and I do not reside in San Carlos, we are deeply connected to it, and I feel I have recommendations to make in this matter. I would like to reiterate the need for permanent supportive housing, which includes housing units and possibly office and working spaces for the mentally ill and their case managers and other support staff. The shortage of such housing for this population is of concern, not only to young families with loved ones facing the challenge of such conditions, but also to older parents whose children live with mental illness at home. Where will they go when their parents can no longer care for them or provide them a safe place to live? Thank you for your kind attention in this matter.
Thank you so much, Patricia. We appreciate your comments. Lynette, are there any other hands raised on Zoom?
There are none.
Okay, we'll give it another 30 seconds. Anyone who's in chambers or watching virtually are happy to take your comments. If you're on Zoom, the, the number to call or, and the meeting ID is pictured on the screen if you're watching it on TV. You can raise your hand by clicking on reactions and the raise hand icon on Zoom if you'd like to speak. If you're joining on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, virtually. Lynette, would anyone else like to speak this evening?
There are none.
Okay, great. And anyone else in chambers who would like to make a comment? Okay, thank you. So with that, Andrea, do we need a motion to close public comment, or is this all kind of within the?
It's not a formal public hearing.
I agree. Thank you. That's what I thought, too. Okay, good. So next, we'll go to commissioners, and I appreciate the staff's thought about how to organize comments in a way that would be helpful. So instead of calling on each So with that, Andrea, do we need a motion to close public comment, or is this all kind of within the?
It's not a formal public hearing.
I agree. Thank you. That's what I thought, too. Okay, good. So next, we'll go to commissioners, and I appreciate the staff's thought about how to organize comments in a way that would be helpful. So instead of calling on each person, let's just take comments by topic. First questions, and then maybe comments, and see where we end up after that. So first, on land use and urban form, do any commissioners have questions or comments on land use? Yeah, Commissioner Anand?
Thank you for the very comprehensive presentation and for the report. My question is regarding, and maybe I missed this information, but the designation for the mixed-use Northeast 90 and 75, what is the basis for the 90 versus 75? Like, how did you determine that? Why is it different?
Through the chair, happy to start off and then let others add on. The thought behind that was to allow a greater density away from the single-family Greater East San Carlos neighborhood and allow a lower density of 75 units to the acre for sites south of Taylor Way. My understanding is that, that breakup of density was decided upon by a recommendation by the planning commission as well as endorsed by, by the city council. But do you want to add anything?
Thank you. That'll be all.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everyone, for the presentations. Two questions. What happens to properties that have sold in the last couple of years, but nothing has been built on the site yet? Are we in a situation like that with any properties, and can they move forward with what their expectation was? Or is it the city's expectation that the use of those properties now has to conform with what the plan lays out? Are there any properties in that situation? Maybe there aren't.
Not that come to mind, but when we, if the plan is adopted, you know, we could look at, sort of, looking at pipeline projects and.
Pipeline projects, yes.
Yeah. And putting a certain point in time in which if a project is submitted before X date, then they'd be subject to those standards to kind of lock in those requirements, understanding that they could have, you know, designed the project current standards. But for, unless a project were submitted, I think staff's take with that, the standards would apply unless they submitted an application prior to it being adopted. I hope that makes sense.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And one additional question, if I might. The, the plan mentions a 20-year projection and a, and a net increase of 1,890 more housing units. Did we zone for this in our recent RENA filings, or, or is this some, I just don't remember if, if those properties have been zoned for that already, or if that's something that you anticipate as we roll the plan out?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Garvey. Good evening, Commissioner Lisa Horace, Planning Manager. So with the adoption of the housing element and the goal to provide enough sites for the current RENA, which is 2,735 new units, all of the housing sites, all of the sites to meet that RENA have already been accommodated for, which are different than what is being presented in this plan. So this plan would be in addition and above our current RENA cycle.
All right. Thank you. That's very helpful. That's all I have. Chair?
Thank you, and thank you for that reminder, Lisa. Commissioner Castaneda, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have, I have several questions. There's a rather robust list of allowed businesses that will be able to come into the area, and I'm wondering, some of them, for instance, include child, childcare, and another use that is going to, that is supposedly allowed is cannabis microbusiness. How is all this managed? I'm presuming we can't have one existing next door to the other, so how is all this going to be determined as to how these businesses are going to be distributed, these microbusinesses?
The, through the chair, I think the list that's being referenced is use classifications for uses allowed or required, or, or rather prohibited in the active retail, retail zones. But to your question, Commissioner, I want to say there are county standards, even city standards, that have specific distance requirements from uses that are not compatible with each other, such as a daycare, daycare use or a cannabis, cannabis use. I think those standards would still apply to what we're recommending in the Northeast.
Okay, and could you also, just one more, the industrial uses that are listed on page 126 of the packet has R and D activities for BSL 3 and 4 containment, but am I correct that San Carlos allows only BSL 1 and 2 containment?
That's correct, yeah. And so on those line items for BSL 3 and 4, those are prohibited.
Okay, and then I had one more that I think would fit into land use that is on your street designs where you're allowing and, and requiring the storefront businesses. When I look at the street designs, one, for instance, on page 178, I see that there's outdoor dining that's shown in the frontage zones of the streets, or it isn't shown there, it's actually in the multi-use curb zones. Could it be in the frontage zones? I wondered why it wasn't there. Is it too narrow, or is it because of the green setbacks?
With a specific project submitted, we could look at, you know, allowing outdoor dining in the frontage zone. I think what's contemplated is that frontage zone is within private property, so the outdoor zone would be in, the outdoor dining zone that we're showing in the plan is in addition to what they could be doing in the frontage zone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bundy?
Thank you very much, Chair Clements. My question is about the height standards for the municipal 75 zone with the, I really appreciate the, the thought that went into the setback zone and the 35-foot height that's nearest to the existing housing. My question is whether the state housing bonuses would allow that 35 feet to be exceeded, or is that, we're sort of locked in as that's the height?
Through the chair, yes, so if it is a residential project that provides enough affordable housing and thus is eligible for state density bonus law, and that allows waivers or reductions of standards or concessions or incentives, it is the case that a project could, you know, request reductions, i.e., an increased height, and the burden of proof would be on the city to determine that there's a health impact or conflict with state law. And if it's a concession or incentive, they'd have to, the burden of proof is on them to, on the applicant, to show that there's a cost reduction associated. Nonetheless, we feel it's important to put in that standard, because if we don't, it may never come. But it is the case that a project, if it provides enough affordable housing, that it could, you know, request to, not by right, request, it's not a guaranteed approval, but they could request to go above that height.
That makes sense, and I'm sure within those negotiations that kind of the placement of that additional height could be maybe further away from the streetscape. So maybe there's language that could be added to incentivize those types of projects, so that the 35-feet height is respected within the residential area.
Yeah, we'll take note of that.
Yeah, and Al, would you like to add to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the planning commission and Chair. What I wanted to add is a little bit of color to that, and what we're, what we intend to do is come up with zoning and height and density that makes sense to develop in the marketplace in the first place, so that when developers come to the city, they don't need to ask for density bonus. So what we've done with these heights is we, we did prototype examinations with an architect and with our consultants and economists to look at, are these feasible from an economic standpoint? Can they be built if we allow it to be this way? And what we found out is, is that even with that setback that goes from 35 up to 75, it, it's feasible to develop a certain number of units, and that, there was a question earlier about the number of units, how we got to that number. We could do more density, but there was consideration of its, of its, how close it is to the neighborhood. And we've talked to the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood for many years, and we, and we've listened throughout this process, and their concerns are with regard to having a transition in height away from their neighborhood. And so that's why it's 35 feet. That's something that the neighborhood found to be generally acceptable, and, and it's actually, it can work to get three stories. And that's about the minimum that a developer would need to start doing a real residential project without asking for a lot of concessions. Now, you'd still have to go up in height to, to make it work. And so that's how we kind of came to these, these heights, and, and that's just a little more information about the density. And then we had a comment from GW Williams, and I think maybe Lisa answered it, but it goes higher because it's farther away, so that 90 feet would allow for even more density on a 14-acre project site. And we feel, in looking at that with our consultants and architects, that that's also a feasible development project. And so I just wanted to add that information, that, that state density bonus isn't a given. If you design your, your zoning to be feasible, and you look at it and you do the analysis with real people, and even, we've even talked to developers in the marketplace and shown them these, this zoning and these heights, and asked them, is this, could you do this? Could you do a project here? And so we've heard from the people that would be doing this kind of work, in the affirmative, yes, we could develop with those zoning standards. We may get little, little bits and pieces of, of requests for these concessions around the edges of things, but that's okay, because it doesn't have a substantial visual impact, you know, if, on the neighborhood, or, and we get the character that we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Actually, Al, if you might want to stay up there just for a minute, this is Al Savay, our head of community development.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for answering. That was a very helpful context about the pro formas and the, the prototyping and what it was assuming, and then the developer conversations. I know this is a balance between signaling to the market as to what we're looking for, and then making sure that we put something together that is, you know, reasonably feasible in the near term, but not, you know, not too aspirational, not too low. So I know it's a balancing act. You answered one of my main questions, which was how do Greater East San Carlos folks react to the setback? And I know you had conversations about that, so I hear you saying that they were, that that, they thought that was a reasonable approach. So thank you for that. I guess I also wanted to talk about how, we know how density bonus could work in case somebody applied, you know, affordable units are required on site. But I wanted to just go back to the question about land use and the BMR ordinance and how it would apply here, and whether there was any consideration to make it explicit that we expected units to be produced on site in this area, either through BMR interpretation or maybe through the, you know, the plan itself. And so how did you think about that, given the heights and the densities, and what was feasible, potentially even for 100% affordable standalone deal that could even do units on behalf of a market rate deal next door?
Well, any project that would come in would be subject to our below-market rate ordinance, as you noted. And, and so there's a 15% requirement for apartments and a 20% requirement for market rate units. And so any development, that's the baseline for any, any development project. What we're seeing in the marketplace, and, and we have worked on affordable housing developments ourselves as a city. Our city council also wears the hat of housing authority in our city. And, and so we're doing housing developments in our city. And, and the financing for below-market rate housing developments is very tricky, but the bigger, the project, the more financially feasible it is, so they can get, it's easier to get tax credits from the state and things like that. So, and, and also lending practices are more flexible the more units you get. So with this large of an area where, right now, there could be feasibility to get some larger, full, you know, below-market rate developments, maybe not the whole GW Williams site, but maybe along the Taylor Way on the other side, nearer to the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood, you have, you have some lots there that are 100, 150 feet deep and maybe 50 feet wide, and you could see 100% affordable housing project in those locations. And, and we've seen it in other cities. Belmont, I think, has one or two projects that are 100% affordable projects right now in the 100-unit range. So I think it's all very possible that we could see a range of below-market rate, and of course, then you get the different affordability levels within those development projects.
Right. So I hear you saying that the existing BMR ordinance as a baseline requires a 15% affordability to be produced on site, and that the lots are large enough, we think that that feasibility is possible. I don't know if you prototyped that out. This is kind of land use, sorry.
Yeah.
Kind of other, but.
We didn't for the full affordable housing projects, but, I mean, there's very similar characteristics in terms of unit size and, and, you know, the, the affordable housing units tend to be a bit smaller than market rate units, so you could actually get more density.
Right. And I don't know if any of the prototypes for basic feasibility included an inclusionary requirement of 15%? Was that, that was standard kind of default on how it was analyzed? It did not?
No, it was based on, on square footage of the unit, like, I think it was 1,000 feet, or 900 to 1,000 feet per unit is, was generally, I think, the metric that we used.
Okay. I had one more question on land use. I know I've, thank you, Al, very much. I know the density bonus, although it's designed at its core to, for the state law, to allow greater heights or lower, you know, lower setbacks in order to increase feasibility, sometimes it can be used in more creative ways, shall we say? I know I've heard of developers asking for a waiver of ground floor commercial requirements, for instance, and so I didn't know if you had thought through any alternatives like that, and how that would play with the language in the plan about how we expect active uses in certain places, and whether, because, you know, state law is sculpted so that you kind of have to say yes. If they say, if they say it's a problem, you kind of have to say yes or prove otherwise, but it's really on them, so.
Very challenging.
It is.
Because the state law does allow for these developers to come through and, and ask for concessions on our zoning code. And, and the way it's, the way it is, the way the legislation is, is they can basically ask for anything, and the city would, must grant it. So the challenge for us is, is we want to create a certain vitality and character and something that actually works as a neighborhood and that has vibrancy and everything. So it's really important, I think, and I think a lot of folks think that, that to have that retail mixed use, that the service uses that are available to the neighborhood, to a new neighborhood that's being created, and you see this all over the country where it, it really does work, it would be probably in everybody's best interest, even a developer, to have that in the neighborhood to make there, to get a higher lease rate, to get a higher for-sale value on the market rate unit. But we're kind of stuck, and we've, we've talked to our city attorney about it, we've talked to housing attorneys about it, and there, it's, there's no clear path forward to, to etch out that corner of, like, our consultants are proposing at the, at the intersections, which are very important. There's no guarantee, as far as we know at this point, that we can force a developer to do it, but it's in everybody's best interest, including the developer, to do it. So I think that's where we are today. I think these are all very new, that all this legislation is new, and every project is a negotiation. No matter what, you have a negotiating power as a seated commission, the council has negotiating authority through the regulatory process, so not a lot of this has been tested yet.
Well, I appreciate your very good point, which is that the more people that live there, the more active the uses are on the ground floor, retail can get supported, that it is a, you know, a, a snowball of positivity if the densities are achieved and those, those spaces are created so that it can then in turn, you know, support the, the new housing that will further come. So I appreciate that thought. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I may, the only thing I would add is there are sites that
The only thing I would add is there are sites that are not zone-residential, that thus would not be eligible for density bonus provisions, that still have required retail corners. So there are some commercial sites that would be required and wouldn't have that benefit of density bonus law.
Brilliant. Thank you. Very good point. Are there any other land use or urban forum questions? Yeah, Commissioner Anand?
I have one. I think it will fit into this category. It says non-residential projects may have an increased FAR and/or height and return for community benefits. Now, I do see this as, this project is going to be interesting in terms of the interaction of commercial, residential, existing residents. We have to balance everything. It's a delicate balance to achieve. Now, is there, so the more objective we can make things, the better it is? So what is community benefits? Is there a list somewhere that lists these?
Yes. So one of the things that we're working through, that we'll work through with the Infrastructure and Finance Subcommittee, as well as the City Council, is developing a menu of options of community benefits that we could prioritize or list as a possible benefit. So that could be additional affordable housing, added open space, a park amenity, things of that nature that go above and beyond the standards that are in the plan. That menu is still in development, and so that menu would be included in the implementation chapter in a future or final version.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great conversation. Thank you. Any other land use and urban forum questions or comments? Okay. Let's move on to mobility and parking. There is a lot of work that's been done to enhance mobility, and especially since, again, part of this area is only half a mile from Caltrain in San Carlos. Really important for us to think through this. Are there any comments or questions on mobility and parking? I guess more focused on comments, I mean, I'm sorry, on questions. And then I'll go through at the end for folks to give their comments in case they have additional ones, so... Questions? Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes. Can you tell me what studies might have been done to determine how the development plans are going to affect traffic congestion on Industrial Boulevard? If the traffic lanes are reduced from four to three? And then I also wanted to know the same thing about any traffic studies done for providing shared bike and car usage on Quarry and Brigado roads in view of the traffic on those roads and the loading zones and trucks. I'm concerned about safety for that issue.
Sure. So through the chair, I can start and then let others add on who may have been more involved with how the streets were designed. So one component that's still in progress is the Environmental Impact Report. And one of the key components is the transportation study that will look at, at a program level, what the growth of the area would do to our roadways, as well as what the potential improvements, i.e. road diets, for example, on industrial, what that would do to the greater roadway. That's still in progress. And so I think that's still something that, you know, we're going to be looking through at a later date.
Please, more questions on mobility and parking?
Or did you have a...
I just wanted to, just quickly, add on, Commissioner, that we had a transportation consultant, Nelson Nygaard, who have been working on this for several years. They did a traffic analysis that was based on the proposed street network that we've put forward as part of the specific plan. They did an analysis which has, they provided key findings to say that these interventions and road diets and integration of active transportation would still be able to, the larger roadway network and how it relates to the larger city would still be functional. I'm happy to provide those key findings as part of that traffic analysis, if you would like to see it. And then to your other question around why are there, you know, why would we share the roadway on Brigado versus Quarry Road, where others we show a clear separation? I think for us, we want to ensure that we're creating a network that can accommodate all different types of users, especially from a bicycle standpoint, from an eight-to-80 standpoint, for people who have different levels of confidence. We feel like with protected bikeways on Old County, Industrial and Taylor Way, that we provide those opportunities for people who would want to be in a more protected environment or facility, whereas we still want to say that these are local streets. You need to share them with vehicles, but it is going to be a share-o, more of a share the road. And for certain users, that's okay. So hopefully that answers your question.
And I also think that providing the paseos, especially the one that goes over to the creek and allows biking up there, maybe leaves some of the traffic on those roads, too. I did have one more question, and this related to parking. I was wondering the reason for having the unbundled parking leases limited to one year?
To be honest, Commissioner, I would have to refer back to our transportation consultant on why they chose that specific duration for the unbundling of parking. I hope you would allow me to follow up on that question.
Of course. But I was just curious. It seemed odd to me. Yeah. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other Commissioner questions on mobility and parking? Commissioner Bundy, do you have any?
I think just a general question. We haven't heard people here commenting on this topic. So I think you've done your really great outreach with the community. But maybe you could reflect back on some of the input that you heard from the community that led to this mobility design?
In terms of overarching feedback that we heard from the community throughout our various workshops, our focus groups, our online surveys, I think there were some common themes. I think one is, especially in the surrounding neighborhoods, people have families. People want to be able to be out on some of the streets with their kids and feel like this is a safe environment to be able to walk, take a stroller, bike with their kids. We really wanted to acknowledge that and celebrate that this is a place where there are families with young kids and also older people. And we need to be thinking about how we can design our roadways to really be as low-stress and accessible and safe as possible. So I think that was one thing we heard very clearly throughout our various engagement touchpoints. I'd also say that projects like the East Side Connect are incredibly popular, and people want to see that be continued to connect to Belmont. So wanted to, especially with the design of Old County Road, to really acknowledge that. And we see that in our proposed conceptual street design. And I, that's, those are two things that I can think of off the top of my head.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Chair or Commissioner Anand, any mobility and parking? Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. The extension of Brigado, that new section, I think is very important. We've talked as a commission for the last couple of years just about how that whole network of roads really wasn't designed for the flow and the safety needs of today. Help me understand that that section, do we need to wait for all of those properties to sell or turn over before the city can begin to make the infrastructure improvements it needs in order to make that section of road a reality? How do you see that working?
I think we're going to put up, I can try to pan to the... Oh, okay. Oh, there we go. So I think you're referencing the proposed new street that connects Brigado to Quarry? Yeah, it's a great question. I think it's a component of what we're looking at in the implementation chapter of, you know, requiring development standards or community benefits to provide this level of public improvement. I think there's a few approaches that could happen that could deliver the new street. One, which would be the most beneficial, is we see a redevelopment project for that block or a project that encompasses that full street to then require delivering the new street. In reality, there may be, because it does encompass multiple sites, it's more likely that they'll come over time, or the project will dedicate segment by segment to allow for full delivery of the street, or they pay into a fair share to allow delivering the street later. It's sort of a crystal ball question.
It is. Usually, I think about the roads first, and then that helps the developer visualize what they want to do with the adjacent property to the road. This is a bit more complicated, because it may happen the other way. Yeah.
And through the chair, I wanted to also follow up on Commissioner Castaneda's question about the unbundled parking. So we looked into it further. The language is such that if a tenant or a resident does lease a space, it'd be a maximum of one year with the option to renew, just to, you know, avoid folks from leasing parking longer than they really need to, to then open it up to a future resident or tenant.
One additional question, if I might. The buffered protected bike lane on Old County is a great idea, and it's a similar question. Does this happen in sections? And this is a part of a community development agreement for properties that abut Old County? And you'll try to roll it out all at once, even though there's many properties that will be along the bike lane? Do you see that rolling out in a similar way to the new street section that might be built?
Yeah, I think so. Again, I think it's sort of an implementation chapter question where if a project is fronting, like you said, that frontage and, you know, typically will require developers to deliver the facilities if it's in front of their frontage. With that said, though, with bike designs, we want to make sure it's a fully-designed and realized and not a segmented bike facility. So I think, yeah, it goes back to the question of the best way to implement it, which is going to be, you know, discussed further in the implementation chapter. And I think one other component that we could look toward is an accompanying Streetsgate Master Plan, which is something we're proceeding with for the downtown, where a future Streetsgate Master Plan for the east side could further design and refine with survey dimensions that bring to life what the specific plan and the Bike and Ped Master Plan are really designing for.
That's very helpful. And I guess a similar situation would be the multi-use trail. Again, there's going to be many properties that abut that multi-use trail. It would be nice to have half of it at least put in at the same time, so that it's not little segments of the trail. But this is going to happen later, and it's in the implementation chapter. Yeah.
Yeah, correct. And there are requirements in the Environmental Resilience Chapter where if a project does abut the creek that they, if they redevelop, need to step it back enough and deliver the multi-use path, at least in their section.
That's another good part of the plan. All right. Thank you. Those are all the questions I had.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Anand, on mobility and parking?
Yes, thank you. I just have one. With the mixed use region, we'll have families that will have children going to schools, which most, all of them are on the west side. So I see these lanes being heavily congested during school hours if they have to commute on the other side. So is that consideration incorporated into the traffic plan?
Yeah, I'll start and let others add on. I think it does. I think the associate traffic analysis looks at the impact of roadways intersection citywide at PM and AM peak hours, which is when school commute hours are. So I think it does look at, you know, roadway impacts, not just in the northeast area itself, but outside of the area.
The one thing that I would like to add, that rush hour is, it could just be offices and commercial traffic. So I would encourage the plan to also consider the school drop-off and pickup traffic at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. I have one more, one or two more questions. I was interested that the plan was talking about max parking, right, as a concept? And liked that there was also upside flexibility to get to a higher parking limit, but that additional would have to be shared parking for the district. I think that's a really interesting approach. I hadn't come across that before. And it seems right to me that this pretty constrained area, that you don't want to spend a lot of space parking, especially if it's not going to get used or underutilized. But I did want to ask, was that tier-two as shared parking, something that you spoke about with any real estate professionals as to like acceptance in this part of the peninsula for that kind of strategy? And, you know, does that make a parcel just as marketable here? Or does that put it into kind of a different category of somebody we're going to sell or lease? You know, the spaces in the industrial spaces?
Based on Nelson Nygaard, our transportation consultant, that tier-two maximum limit is really based on transportation best practices. Because, again, we're trying to balance the fact that we're not trying to overpark. But based on the different classifications of land use, this is what our transportation consultant, based on a series of findings from projects across, best practices in projects across the country, have seen are the appropriate type of maximum limit to establish as part of our parking maximum. And again, this is something that is being considered on a citywide kind of basis as well. So what we're putting forward is a kind of a first pass as part of the larger district. But we think that this could be modified to align with what's happening with the larger citywide type of parking and TDM policy.
Right. And are there any communities in our area that have that kind of policy already working? I assume, you know, we have very strong real estate fundamentals right here. So that's a good place to start with policies like this, but...
Yes. I think there are cities around us, San Francisco, I think, and San Jose, and Sacramento, larger cities who have adopted maximums, because it is a different way of looking at parking from what urban planners are used to, which is minimum-based. And it is driven really by the MTCU TOC policy that this plan is furthering and adopting to meet that policy. And you'll hear more about that at our citywide TDM study session next week. And to follow up on the question about sort of outreach to, or making sure it's calibrated to development, I was just reminded that in preparing or calibrating the maximums, our consultants looked at developments that exist or approved to really right-size and to find an average for what developments are providing, and making sure that cap isn't too low or too high to make projects feasible.
Right. And again, you know, the firm doing this, Nelson Nygaard, very well-regarded, I'm sure, accessing all the right data to make those decisions. Okay. I think that is, you know, I had more questions about the implementation, but I do think that's part of the point of that, is to like figure out how that phasing would work, and how do you get enough money to do the infrastructure that you need to, kind of completely at one time, so it's not inefficient as you build it out, too? So, okay. With that, let's go on to the next topic on environmental resilience. And wanted to ask any Commissioner if you wanted to start with comments. Vice Chair?
Chair, a couple of questions. I read something in the packet about developments having to manage stormwater if they're over a certain size. Can you comment, can you add any more detail to that? And does this apply to both residential as well as commercial development in the area?
That's, I think that's in reference to C3 requirements and the municipal regional stormwater permit, MRP 3.0, where it does apply, if I'm not mistaken, to residential and non-residential, wherever a certain quantity of area is disturbed, that certain stormwater measures would be, need to be complied with.
That's very helpful and very useful. Yeah, that's a good idea. My last question relates to the EIR. The EIR, the Environmental Impact Report for this, is that a sort of an overarching umbrella, programmatic EIR? And then as specific parcels are developed, additional secret requirements might be triggered that are specific to that site? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. The approach for the Environmental Impact Report is that it's a programmatic or program EIR, where it looks at development as a whole for what's contemplated in the northeast area-specific plan. And so projects could tear off of or be exempt if they are within the guardrails of what's been analyzed in the EIR. And if projects, as they come online, or if they're designed that go above and beyond what would be contemplated in the EIR, or if there's impacts that come about as a result of new requirements, then there's a chance that, yes, there could be an addendum or an amendment to the EIR to make sure it clears environmentally. an amendment to the EIR to make sure it clears environmentally.
That's very helpful, and I think it's very responsive to the commenter we had heard earlier about possible soil contamination on specific sites in the area and possibly needing additional mitigation or certainly additional review. And so I think if there's any additional environmental documentation needed, that there is an opportunity, when that site is developed, for a very targeted review of what's happening with the soil. Am I saying that?
Yeah, that's correct. If there's site-specific conditions that the EIR does not flag during the project review, project by project, if we discover that for any reason for site-specific conditions, that could elevate the environmental review required.
Thank you. Very helpful. That's all I had.
Very helpful context. Thank you. Thank you for raising those. Commissioner Anand, do you have anything on environmental resilience?
Yes, I have one. So I see this as a very complex area to tackle with the big industrial zoning, plus its mixed use, plus its residences. And in addition, there are the water level concerns, the contamination concerns. So I know there's an EIR in motion already, but one thing is that this is a long-term project. So let's say if a heavy industrial establishment comes in, something happens with the soil, say, a couple of years down, and then some residences need to be built around that area, or that disturbs the groundwater in some way and the water table rises, and then the residences, potentially, future residences are impacted. So can you educate me as to what the process is to take a holistic view when it comes to environmental requirements, when it comes to these permits and laws in that area for building and construction?
Yeah, I think the intent of the EIR is to provide that holistic review of what we're contemplating now in the northeast-specific plan. And it is based on a certain baseline today, but if conditions change, that really changed that baseline. To Vice Chair Garvey's point, there could be site-specific conditions that would warrant additional or further review that could be an addendum to the EIR, because it is a 20-year plan, and a lot of things can change in 20 years. And so hopefully, the EIR is forward enough-looking that we may not need an addendum, but it is a reality that certain conditions or project requests could trigger additional environmental review, above and beyond what's been looked at in the EIR.
Thank you.
Thank you. To my left?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes. I do. I have several questions. Because this is such a flood zone, are there any thoughts that perhaps the project would start with the new storm drain in the area? And if so, do we have any idea where it would be and what capacity is needed and how much
What I will say is that as part of this planning process, in the implementation chapter, as I mentioned, there are a series of recommendations for underground utilities, storm drains, sanitary sewer, that have been vetted by the city and prioritized as saying these would be the utility capital projects that should be, whether it's a pipe that needs to be widened to be able to accommodate projected storm surge or flooding. And ultimately, that should be put into the capital improvement plan and work with our funding and financing mechanisms to ensure that that can be implemented in a certain timeframe. And what would be great as part of the streetscape master plan that was being put forward, that would be developed in the future, to be able to do the surface roadway improvements as you do the underground utility improvements as well. So it's a coordinated effort to help ensure that, to your point, yes, there are certain things in terms of just basic infrastructure that will help support the larger stormwater mitigation and management for the district. And so can we help improve the roadway experience as well when that type of infrastructure is happening?
Absolutely. That's very, very helpful. And I do have one other question. I believe, and I don't know if I'm correct, is there some plan that the improvements to Belmont Creek, are they supposed to be shared with the city of Belmont? And what's the status of that?
Yes, so it's a complex issue, and Belmont Creek goes way up into the Belmont, up near Ralston and everything. And currently, there's a project, I'm going to kind of talk about the whole thing, because it's all connected, right? And we have, the part that goes through our city is down toward the bottom of the creek. And so the water comes from up in the hills and comes down and gets, during heavy rains, you get a big flow coming down. And then if you have a special tide, one of those king tides, then the tide comes up, and that's why we get our flooding where we are. And that's our issue. We'd love to solve for that, if we could solve for it just in our community, but the water comes from, of course, upstream. So there's a big project that's going on up there. And we've been talking to the Harbor Industrial Association, is a group of people that meet once a month, and they're made up of property owners and business owners in the area. We actually have lunch with them just about once a month and talk about these issues. And so we've been talking about it for many years. It's very important to them. And so the intent of what we have going through San Carlos and that area is that all the developers on our side would be in charge of fixing up their side of the creek. And then there's the Belmont, I think the property line is pretty close. And on the other side, those developers would have to fix their side of the street. I think Rendell mentioned this concept of a fair share cost. And so what typically happens is you've cost out the project from, let's say, in our city, that link there. We cost it out, we know what the cost is, and then we say to each developer, you have to pay your fair share. And that's how we get it done. So I'm not sure that I answered your question, but that's the intent. And in fact, we did have one project that was approved. It was the Quarry 642 Quarry project at the corner of Quarry and Old County Road. And they were required, as a condition of project approval, to upgrade that creek. Some developers may wish to upgrade the whole thing on their side, like not just their side, but the whole thing. Alexandria, as an example, agreed to do that for their project, to improve the entire creek on both sides, because it benefits them, too. And from an engineering and drainage and flooding standpoint, but also from an aesthetic standpoint, it benefits their development project. So there's a number of different ways to approach it. That's probably what we would do, is the fair share idea, and get it done as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one follow-up question on the creek. The riparian section, riparian section looks really good, and all of the different zones that you have look good. Is this impacting any existing businesses? And what kind of feedback are we getting from them about the feasibility of this design? Because the design, spreading out the banks spreads the water and prevents flooding, but how feasible is it for the existing businesses that are there now?
Well, they don't have to do anything. Yeah, so they're grandfathered in, as we say. So they don't have to do any improvements. It's only if new development would occur. And then we are requiring a larger setback than what we require today. Today, we only require a 25-foot setback from the bank of the creek, and now we're going to be asking for more, 35 feet, for new development. But again, the existing folks don't have to do anything.
So are there any within the setback areas?
I'm not so sure. We'd have to take a closer look at that. Yeah, not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bundy?
Sure. I was going to do a little reflection on what Belmont Creek does today, to be able to ask some questions. So Belmont Creek comes under El Camino, it goes under Caltrain, and then it takes a hard right turn, which water doesn't like to do, and then it takes a hard left turn where it opens up, and then it's superchanneled with development right up to the banks on both the Belmont and San Carlos side. Today, in a king tide and atmospheric river, flooding will actually happen at Old County and Harbor. Both of the manholes surcharge. And then when it gets to Old County and it goes in an undersized culvert up against a high tide, it's overflowing into properties on both sides of the creek. It overflows onto the roadway, and it can stay that way for quite some time. There's traffic safety issues, the PG&E traffic is kind of driving through the rainy, the flooded streetscape. So it's a significantly challenging area today, and it's very flashy. So it could be a very short-duration storm. And the one in December was not even against a king tide. It was like four hours before king tide and still caused quite a bit of flooding. And so any room we're making for water is a tremendous benefit. And so really glad to see these significant setbacks. And also the opportunity to elevate the sites, to create higher creek banks to prevent the flooding, and then creating more places for water elsewhere within the district, that's going to significantly reduce the flood risk in this area. So I just wanted to kind of share what I knew about that issue. One thing I did want to ask about is the need for future pump stations. I'm sure your engineers are thinking about this, but there may be a need as sea levels rise and extreme precipitation becomes more extreme and more frequent to pump against a king tide. So just kind of thinking about potential land use needs for that. It can't be just anywhere. There has to be proximity to the creek in order to provide a sufficient forbear. So just put some thought into that and how we might be able to kind of preserve the opportunity to intelligently cite pump stations in the future. So that's what I have to offer, more of a statement than a question.
Clearly, your area of expertise. I really appreciate you sharing that with us. I had, I think, probably just one question around the environmental resilience, well, two. Just to go back to Sam Hartsborough's comment about any particular sites with contamination needs, would it be appropriate to put in a strategic, I'm sorry, in a specific plan like this, statements about sites that would have their own contamination or their own mitigation requirements, or kind of over and above whatever the plan would entail? Is that an appropriate, is this an appropriate home for that? Or is this just kind of assumed in basically the staff approvals? Because it's also, the EIR evaluates the project's impact on the environment, not the other way around as much, right? So can you talk about what's the best vehicle for that kind of information for development certainty?
I think this is a policy document, so your aspirational values for what you want to see, right? So you want to, I mean, in general, we would want to see the highest usage or removal of whatever contaminants, the highest engineering standards and that kind of thing. The issue that we have as a regulatory agency is the Environmental Protection Agency and other agencies have jurisdiction over the city. And we've talked to the EPA, and there's another group, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, that have jurisdiction. And we don't have the regulatory authority to force developers to do more than what their regulations say can be done. And so that's part of the issue. Now, the city can try, like I said earlier, we have the ability to negotiate because we have regulatory control. And so we can ask for higher standards. The developers can kind of push back. But if you're trying to get a project approved through a planning commission or a city council, you have some say in the matter. And so developers generally will try to work with you. However, the cost of going above and beyond what the regulations are that the federal and state governments are bringing can be very, very expensive. If you're going to put in residential, of course, you want to be able to, again, rent your apartments and sell your units. So you want to have people feel good about that they're not living on something that's not good for them. So the developer has an incentive to do good engineering as well.
Right. That's really helpful, and I appreciate the context, again, about the entities that do have authority to make requirements. And it sounds like it could be something that was discussed, but not necessarily required through the plan. That's helpful. One more question, which is, you had mentioned that developers would be coordinating with, I guess, the city and then One Shoreline to assess groundwater rise vulnerability. What would that, tell us more about One Shoreline, and is that a process to go through with an agency? Or is that just kind of an information source? What is One Shoreline, and what would that look like?
The One Shoreline is a regional agency that advocates for larger bayshore resilience. So as Al was kind of mentioning to me, is that they have been the one who have been advocating for the 35-foot setback from Belmont Creek. And they actually have on their website a planning and regulatory design document that really dives into many of the things that we're covering here within the specific plan, but even goes beyond. And so there seems to be a lot of, throughout the planning process, One Shoreline has said that they would like to be a part of these type of conversations. So we're putting it out there in the specific plan as an opportunity for coordination and consultation. But ultimately, this regulatory approval and moving through the specific plan would be on the authority of the city of San Carlos.
Yes, so the city's the authority. It's not a regulatory body. There's no hurdle to get past One Shoreline's approval or anything. It's more like best practice. It's kind of like Kelsey Air Station, having guidelines out there, best practices, and folks can say this is a good practice, but it's not necessarily a hurdle for developers to pass technically. Okay.
I have a point of disclosure. I work for One Shoreline. I started in November, so I work for One Shoreline.
Thank you for disclosing that.
But I was not part of providing the comments on this plan, nor writing the planning policy guidance, which is incorporated.
Thank you for the perceived conflict statement, which is not a conflict. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, I think we are done with the environmental resilience piece and can go on to other questions, but also now, other comments that you'd like to make. Who would like to start? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Chair.
Vice Mayor, sorry. Vice Chair. That rhymed.
This was a very good discussion tonight. I like that this plan provides certainty to the process once a property is sold, so that the future development of any property can be very thoughtfully explored. We've heard from many stakeholders, businesses and residents, in the last two years since we've started this, maybe it's been longer. I feel that the plan as drafted today is very responsive to the communities and the stakeholders' vision for this area. One of the things I like, I like quite a few things, that at least 50%, we're orienting at least 50% of the open space directly around Belmont Creek, and I thought that was a very good idea. What else? I liked adding residential mixed use to a portion of the area. And we heard a lot from the residences in the area about, as Al was mentioning earlier, having setbacks and transitions and being very aware that there are two neighborhoods that may be adjoining. So I like the transition and how that's been managed. I think that's very responsive to the comments from the residences that we have heard. I like that new retail services will be available to new residences. So if they choose to live down there, there will be new retail opportunities for them to shop. And I like how that's been laid out in the draft plan. And lastly, we've heard also from small businesses in the area that they want to continue to have their small business in this new community. And I see that there are ground-floor opportunities for small-scale manufacturing spaces on selected roads in the northeast area, and that this will continue, which I think really is supportive and responsive to the comments from small businesses in the area that we've heard from. I'm very pleased with where the draft is today, and I'm looking forward to I'm very pleased with where the draft is today, and I'm looking forward to the implementation portion of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Anand?
Thank you. I have one question and then a few comments. I'm not sure if this should be a part of planning or implementation, but the addition of 2,000 units, even if long-term, is a very lofty goal, which means our already existing school system and childcare services will be overburdened with that. So is there any sort of a plan for, I want to say, congruent development wherein, upon addition of X number of residences, there should be an addition of these many school seats or school or daycare infrastructure, anything like that?
So through the chair, I can start and let others add on. I think it's a component of the environmental impact report that we'll look at, the number of units proposed and the number of population that's anticipated. And I think there is a ratio that does look at school capacity in the public services section of the EIR. And then to your point about childcare, that is, could be a form of a community benefit. When we consider the menu of options for community benefits, we could note that as, you know, a possible form of benefit to provide a childcare use on-site.
That would be great if that can be included. And in addition, things, very basic facilities such as grocery stores. Our Trader Joe's parking lot is already overwhelmed. So with more people, we need more food. So just for an example. And I'll just provide my comment also while I have the mic. I really liked how the report was structured. I super appreciate the addition of pictures in the report because it immediately helped me envision what the future could be like. So thank you for doing that. My comment would be that this is a very exciting opportunity to innovate with this whole mixed-use northeast region. All these different kinds of entities need to coexist. And for that, the role of the city becomes to facilitate a peaceful and harmonious coexistence. Any sort of change is hard, so for existing businesses or residents, this change can be hard. So thank you for involving the community and listening to all the voices. I hope we continue on that path. In addition, I would advocate for communicating the value of the new development to the residents of the city and of that particular community, because the more transparency we can maintain, the more trust we can build in the community. And the path can become easier. Also, I want to reiterate the importance of setting objective standards and not leaving anything up to interpretation would be highly valuable. So thank you for all the good work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Castaneda?
I do think that the public draft was of very high quality and clearly explained and well illustrated. So thank you. It was very easy to follow that. I have one suggestion. I do think that when we have, we can have objective standards in our measurements by including tolerances. And so I would encourage you that when you have, for instance, on the storefront projects, you say a certain percentage has to be a glass front. I would encourage the addition of tolerances. And it's still going to be an objective standard, and it should reduce review and, you know, prevent complications. So I think wherever we could do that, it would be very helpful. I liked that a lot of the provisions, I think that the maximum parking levels are very reasonable. And I particularly like the shared and unbundled parking provisions and that we've got even EV charging requirements in here as well. And I'm happy to see that the 100% affordable residential projects are exempt from a number of the standards. So overall, I'm very supportive, and I think we've made great progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bundy?
Sure, thank you so much. I think this is an incredibly thoughtful and visionary plan. I appreciate that it's grounded in the principles that you've set forth. It's going to be really providing tremendous benefit to the district and to the city and to the peninsula as a whole. I think things like protected bike lanes to areas that it was not previously zoned for is a tremendous benefit to the city and contributing to our housing allocation goals. And I've already spoken about the value of the resilience measures that are included. Just wanted to kind of highlight potential opportunities for community benefits, opportunities that were raised today in public comment, things like permanent supportive housing, maybe going above and beyond on providing groundwater rise resilient contamination cleanup. Those could be things that we could try to incentivize through the community benefits approach and would reflect public comment. So thank you all for your really diligent work, all the tremendous outreach that you've done. It's really great to see that reflected in this plan.
Thank you. I had just another couple of questions and then a couple of comments. Does being consistent with the MTC TOC policy for maximum parking just in this area, could that merit us any eligible grant funding from MTC? Or would it need to be citywide? Do you know? I like that we're trying to, you know, start here and move towards things that should become citywide. But just wondering if you knew anything about financial resources potential from MTC?
Yeah, my understanding is that for us to be eligible for OABAG forefunding, the cities, we'd have to comply with MTC TOC policy citywide because there are areas that are subject to the policy that are even outside the northeast.
Citywide, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, but definitely complying with the TOC policy in the northeast moves a needle, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Thanks. And then just, you know, the thought about new neighborhood, I really do think we need to include affordability as we build this housing out. We would not want a whole area of the city with absolutely no affordable apartments as apartments get built. So again, I know the BMR ordinance says, you know, you shall build. I think that that is important to make sure that that comes about. I know generally, developers can have other alternatives other than building. But I do think either through that ordinance or through the community benefits uses, the need for affordable housing is, you know, significant in our community. Our RENA goals are quite high, as we know. And it does take money to do, to achieve those for the lower income levels. And I also agree with the comments made about the need for, you know, transit-accessible housing that is affordable, deeply affordable for some community members. And they're not folks that we necessarily may think about. So I think the idea of, you know, that those are at risk and they're kind of hidden at risk, folks in the community, I totally get. And also understand that most times, that kind of special needs perm supportive housing would come from 100% affordable developments with adequate spaces for services and adequate mission-oriented developers. So I guess it's a general comment, I want to make sure that the plan does facilitate deals like that. And I do think the densities are appropriate, as we've laid out, for that to come about. But I do want to name that as something that I think is very important as we build out near transit, that we do include affordability there, including deeply affordable with supportive services. In general, I thought the draft plan was very well done, really well thought out. And I agree with my colleagues that so many of the community comments seem to have been incorporated. Really glad to hear the Greater East Side folks who have been engaged on this had looked carefully at the setbacks and thought, you know, that's okay. And, you know, all of the concern about community, environmental resilience here, we have lots of public comment on that very frequently. And that is such a core part of this plan, which it needs to be in this area. So I was really gratified to see that. I like the mid-block crosswalks, you know, like thinking through how this smaller-scale area is really going to be used. Again, I thought, like, even going to that level of how are people going to cross and where, like, that's, it's important as you create these communities. And the mobility hubs and the need for active ground floor uses that make everything, you know, walkable and nice over there as it does build out. And then I think the plan does a good job at trying to figure out how existing uses can continue, how future uses that are not, that are, you know, industrial and light industrial should continue, and how to make that compatible with housing and where to do that. I think that it's been a very thoughtfully iterated process that I think people have been working on for a very long time to really think this through. And I think the draft shows how much planning has happened and really good data and good thoughts with a lot of very skilled people working on it. So I agree with my colleague, the importance of continuing to listen to the community about what they would like to see. For those of you who may be listening, you know, the community benefits priorities are city council action, right? And so as that will go forward with the city council deciding on the community benefits, that they should be prioritizing. So I encourage folks who have thoughts on that to speak out to the city council. And again, like, thank you for, you know, following the bike pad master plan here and really thinking through how to make biking in this area safer with the protected bike lanes. I was really glad to see that. So on the whole, I thought, really excellent work, and I'm happy to be involved, even in a small way, with this exciting future that we're trying to build. So thank you. Any last comments before we wind down the study session? Did staff get some helpful feedback? Okay, a lot of feedback, long feedback, so, okay, good. Rendell, thank you. And Mark, thank you so much. And all the staff involved, thank you very much. Okay, all right. Onto Agenda Item 8, Reports, Correspondence and General Information. Any reports on recent city council actions? Andrea?
At the last city council meeting, the council reviewed and adopted the Pogus Creek Watership Plan, which you've also taken a look at and provided comments on, as well as the economic development plan. And then they also authorized staff to transmit the annual reporting to HCD, which I believe you looked at a meeting or two ago.
Congratulations. Housing Element reporting, year two, done. Okay, excellent. All right, great. Any comments or reports from the Planning and Transportation Commission members? I did want to call everyone's attention just to the information that we got from 21 Elements about the next commissioner training. And I'm assuming that, you know, we should coordinate with staff in case we want to attend, but that it's possible, it's a training, that more than a quorum of us can go. And, you know, it's always a good event, so.
Chair, can I have a comment?
Please, yes.
On March 24th, I had the opportunity to attend the city council meeting where they recognized Marsh as the Women's History Month. And thank you to all the commissioners for your great work. And our commission was recognized as an all-woman commissioner. It was, it was great to attend that meeting and to actually get that recognition from the city council.
Thank you for bringing that up. I thought it was a fabulous city council meeting with the Girl Scouts doing the pledge and then recognition of the role of women in this community. And so really, thank you for attending, those of you who are able to come, because I thought it was, it was really kind of the mayor and vice mayor to kind of support that, that event. And Crystal, the city clerk. So thanks. Any correspondence? Andrea?
In addition to the two items handed to you by the public this evening, a copy of the correspondence from GW Williams was left at the dais as well and has been included as a supplemental item online with our packets.
Thank you. And if anyone would like to see the pretty pictures that they dropped off as exhibits, feel free to come look after the meeting. Great. And then finally, planning staff comments, reports and updates on current and future projects.
So your next meeting will be this upcoming Monday, April 7th, at 6:00 PM. So noting that it is an hour earlier than normal and thanking you all for your patience as we schedule many meetings and move items around, staff really appreciates your flexibility with that. At that meeting, you'll be hearing 11 El Camino Real, which is an update to the previously approved residential project. They're proposing to add nine new units. So you'll be reviewing the revised BMR plan. You'll also be looking at a recommendation to council for the downtown streetscape master plan. And finally, a study session on the transportation demand management, or TDM, study session. And that is it.
Thank you. Thank you to staff for working so hard on sequencing all of these really important items on a limited number of meetings and making it convenient for us as much as possible to attend. I really appreciate that.
And sorry, I just had one more thing. As of now, the Alexandria development is scheduled for April 21st.
Thank you. And I just wanted to confirm, on Monday, we do have a quorum. And I will not be able to be in attendance. And so, Vice Chair, will you be able to? Thank you so much. Okay, great. Any other updates, Andrea? Wonderful. I think with that, we are adjourned. Thank you to everyone for tonight.